Still on the floor.
Tonight, we're going to be doing two public hearings for special permits and one site plan review. But before that, we've got one little piece of business to take care of, and it'll only take a few minutes. And for the site plan, I mean for the special permits, we have to have at least four of the five members here. And I know I've spoken to them, and they're going to be here, but they're running a little late. So the first lot of our business will be a Form A plan. Mr. Macy is proposing to buy this property and divide it, or to buy the lot two portion of it. This is on North Elm Street, and it's part of the Pillsbury Florist property. They are selling off the real land. I had a question regarding the access, and I looked into it. Unfortunately, I, there was a case that relates a perfect model for this particular piece of property in Sudbury. The land, it went to court. The land court said it could be done this way. It was appealed to the appellate court. They said it couldn't be done, which I had the record unbeknownst to me. At a later time, the Supreme Court turned around and said, and affirmed the land court that it could be done this way. So the question of the frontage, the fact that he's got his legal 150 feet of frontage, and then the land wraps completely around this property, and he has access over a 40-foot strip, is actually based on the model of Cochran versus the town of Sudbury.
So is he going for, where's the building with the, he built up here?
Yeah, he'll build up there.
Even though he's square as hell?
Yeah, well, he doesn't have to build him a square. All he has to do is show the square.
Show the square, okay. So it's got 150 feet?
Plus.
Plus, and a mixtah, so it's currently in the model?
Yes. Yeah, lots one and two are the current properties. Over the years, whoever owned Pillsbury's and their predecessors sold off the three lots in between.
So we're meeting on the standards?
Yep.
How moved that we signed the Form A is presented?
We have a motion in a second to sign the Form A.
Hey, Tony. How many you keep? Three?
Um, yes.
Three.
Mr. Macy? Okay, we now, we now have a quorum. We're doing West Center Street, Loews, okay. And where's, which one of these has the Lowell stuff in it?
The box. That one that you got your hand in, I think.
Oh, this? And we got an invoice?
Yes.
I hope I don't have to read that one.
I know, I didn't get a chance to. Well, you should have the notice.
Yeah, here it is, here. I'm having trouble trying to print it. Okay, good evening, everyone. Tonight, we're going to be having a special permit hearing for Lowell's Home Center, which is proposing to put an addition on the building. I'll start out by introducing the board. On my far right is Tony Kinnahan, James Noys, Gerald Stetson. I'm Hugh Hurley, the chairman. And Adana Carter is our recording secretary. I'll start by reading the notice as it was printed in the Brockton Enterprise on June 15th and the 22nd. Notice is hereby given pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 4.6, Water Resource Protection District, Section 7.2 Site Plan, and Section 7.5 Special Permit of the West Bridgewater Zoning Board, zoning bylaws. The West Bridgewater Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, June 30 at 7:00 p.m. in the McDonald Brown Conference Room to discuss the modification to a special permit site plan to construct a 3,108-square-foot addition for Tual rental center. The plans were submitted by solely engineering on behalf of Lowell's Home Center, located at 724 West Center Street. A special permit is required for activity in the Water Resource Protection District. A site plan review is part of the special permit process and signed by the members of the planning board. This is a public hearing, so anybody in the public will have an opportunity. But to begin with, we're going to ask the proponent or a representative of the proponent to explain what he is proposing to do, and which time. The board may have some questions for him. And after that is all done, then we'll open it up to anybody in the general public that wishes to address any of the concerns. When we do get to that point, I ask that you introduce yourself. We know many of you, but for the sake of Adana, who keeps very good minutes for the forest, we want to get it, get everything all down straight. So I just ask you to introduce yourself in all the questions to go through the chair. With that being said, I'll ask you to introduce yourself as a representative.
Good evening, board members. My name is Casey Birch. I'm a civil engineer, solely engineering. And I am here on behalf of the applicant, Lowell's Home Centers LLC, for the special permit of a building addition for a proposed pool rental center. The project proposes about a 3,108-square-foot building addition at the northwest corner of the existing Loews, which is at 724 West Center Street. In addition to that building expansion, we are proposing a 1,500-square-foot caged area, which is a 12-foot-high black vinyl fencing cage on a concrete pad, and that will also have a canopy associated with it. And that's built into the rear, won't be really visible to the parking area. In addition to the building addition and the caged area and the modifications adjacent to that addition, we are requesting 15 spaces out front, adjacent to the existing lumber canopy, to be able to have outdoor display for the specific equipment that they plan to rent out into this facility. Stuff like towable aerators, towable log splitters, some augers, trenchers, and tillers and stuff like that. Those are the bigger pieces of what you can rent in the rental center. And there will also be some display in the actual cage area in the back. So as just previously mentioned, this is the 3,108-square-foot building, the shaded area here. And this concrete pad hatch area is the canopy of the cage area. To accommodate this addition, we did have to modify the parking to the west. So we are removing 26 spaces in this area to provide for a 24-foot-wide drive aisle for access for fire. And we don't foresee customers using this, and neither do we foresee the use of the loading trucks, the loading docks on the other side. But there is enough depth and width in that drive aisle to accommodate both, just in case. To put this building in, we did have to make some modifications to the drainage out there now. And we're just simply connecting into an existing drainage ranhole, coming around and coming back and connecting back in at the cage. We also had to modify some of the water lines here, mainly the one that's associated with the water tank and back into the existing line that runs across the front of Lowell's. To enter this addition, you can access it through a front door externally, next to the lumber canopy, which is right here. But the main access will be probably internally. That's where they foresee most of the traffic coming in for customer access. And then you can access the cage through a rear man door in the back. There are two gates associated with the 12-foot-high cage, but those will not be accessible to customers. They're mainly for operations and loading uses. This is just what we plan to do during construction. We are removing the pavement in this area. And like I said before, we will be relocating some of the drainage and the one water line. This is approximately 18,500 square feet. We have gone in front of conservation for the stormwater permit. We did get that approved at the last conservation meeting. And what we plan to do, the SEC plans are pretty basic. Soil erosion settlement control plan is pretty basic. It is in a low-lying area, so everything drains to this catch basin here. So we are capturing everything that we will be working on within this inlet protection. And then we will propose a gate, construction fencing around the proposed work. And we will be keeping the canopy, the operations for the canopy loading intact of the one-way drive with the construction fence separating that. So the building addition is approximately 20 feet high. The existing Lowell's is, I think, about 38 feet. So it will be shorter, but it will be flush to the facade. And we will propose the same paint and materials as the existing building to keep it continuous with architecturally. Here's the 12-foot-high fence with canopy in the back. And yeah, that's a black vinyl fence. Again, not really noticeable to the public, but that's pretty much my spiel. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. How far is the building off the property line?
Well, that is 77 feet, a little more than 77.
The new addition will be 77 feet?
Correct.
Okay. And can you get a 53-foot tractor trailer around this S curve that Jorgie got halfway at the end of it?
Yeah, you can actually get a 67 through there. And that's what Lowell's requires, or used to require. I don't know if they ever reduced it, but...
Okay, so you've done all of that?
Yep.
Are they going to be, I know this would be rentals, are they going to be servicing any of the machinery that they'll be renting out?
No, the only thing that they will be doing is spraying it down with water periodically. And there are trench drains that will go into a stormwater system and an oil-water separator just in case there's any, you know, any residuals that might come out from, just from that spray wash, so.
Other than the cans of gasoline that they sell, will there be any selling of any liquids, open containers of liquids here?
No, no.
Okay. What we're looking at is the water protection. We don't want to see, one of the things we don't want to see is gasoline spilling on and getting down into our wells.
Right.
That's where I'm going. And I just want to get it on record that you, that these things won't be the...
Right.
And anybody else have anything?
After our returns?
I'm actually not sure on that, to be honest.
I mean, they're open, you know, pretty much from dawn to dusk anyway, so.
Yeah, I mean, they'll have the same operation hours as the main building. It will be a cohesive unit. And they do plan to employ about five additional employees to man the rental center as well.
Is it just, how big of equipment is it going to be involved? Just basically push and pull type stuff?
Yeah, correct.
Not small?
Nothing you can drive, nothing you can, yeah, exactly. It's, everything's like a towable. And yeah, it's pushing, pull type things.
You're giving up 26 parking spaces?
Correct, yes.
Is that, do you still comply with the...
So we comply with the original special permit, which was about 550 spaces. We did take off, I think, in existing condition right now. That's with this old charlie horse. I think there's a lease or some sort of agreement that had 100 spaces that you guys did not have, and it's part of your special permit, it's far as 550. But we are at 609 total, so...
So you're still reading the whole contract?
Correct. And just to let you guys know that Lowell's, typical Lowell's of this size, it's about three per thousand. So operationally, Lowell's really only needs 465 spaces. So we're well over even what they typically require for a store the size.
Well, yeah, but what really counts is what you count.
Right, no, I understand.
Now, you're going to sell, obviously, you're going to have gasoline on site. It will be in small plastic containers, three gallon, five gallon, that kind of thing to fill these. Most of them are gasoline-fired.
Right, they, they won't sell the gasoline.
No, no, but you'll fill the tool before it leaves.
Yeah.
If I rented an auger, it's going to have fuel.
Well, I think you'd have to fuel it if you rented the auger. I don't know if they provide you with gas. I don't think that's part of it.
If I take an auger or something out of the building and rent it, the gas may or may not have fuel in it, or...
It may, it would.
Yeah, you could...
From previous, yeah, from previous, yeah, correct.
Well, even, I mean, do they top it off today? I mean, I've never rented anything from Lowell's, I'm not sure how they...
I don't think they top it off because they don't have that capability in here. They don't have like a gas supply in here for that.
No, I understand that, no, no, they wouldn't have a gas supply. We wouldn't let them anyway.
Right, I don't think they take the equipment, drive it off, fill it up, come back.
No, no, I mean, we can fill it when we can.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure they will not be doing that.
Do you know if there's any intention? More important than gasoline, motor oil, hydraulic fluid, will any of that be stored on site?
It, stored on site? It will be in the equipment. I don't, it won't be, it won't be maintenance, maintained on site.
If you had a drum of hydraulic, let's say that, then that would be stored. And that would, that would require secondary containment, and we can impose a law with that.
I can confirm that. I don't, I do not believe that they, they have no space in there, in this, in the actual building, from what I saw in the floor plans, to actually have that type of waste contained on site. But I can definitely confirm.
Talking about virgin product, really not waste.
Oh, okay. I can definitely double-check that. I believe, I don't think so, but I can definitely double-check.
Because most rental places send the machine out full, and it's up to you to bring it back full.
I'll see if that's their operation. So yeah, exactly, they might have it at one point full, and then it's all...
So is there any place in that thing for, say, spill containment, even for my example?
Well, they have the oil separator. Just in case there is a spill, it will go to that, correct.
Are there any interior floor drains?
There are two, yes.
Stayed by.
Correct.
And they go into the oil separator?
Correct, yes.
Any further questions of the board? With that, I'll open it up to any people from the public who would have any questions. Okay. We have to make some findings in here. So what I'm going to do is we have two sets of findings that we have to one. One is in the water resource, and the other is in the special permit. And I think that we should probably condition it with that there will be no dispersing of oils or fuel within the site. Just put it right in, and then it won't, you know, they can go into the store and buy one of those pre-mixed oil and gas and take it home with them and chop the tank off, or they can go to a gas station. But it will be, we don't want, we don't want to see any open containers of fuel and gas.
Okay, totally understand.
Okay. So that'll be one of the conditions. Is there any other conditions that anybody has concerns with?
No, the lighting will be continued, it's already on the building, right?
Correct, yes. Actually, I think the light, there is, we don't affect existing lighting in this corner, so yeah, it'll be continued.
The building, I believe, is box lighting anyways, so...
And that lighting out there, none of the residents, nobody's going to see it, you won't even...
Light hasn't set the diodes.
Okay, so let's, I'll read, what I'm going to do is read all of the conditions, and then we'll take one vote, or we can discuss anything if anybody has a concern. This is Section 4.6.9.3. A is consistent with the purpose and intent of Section 4.6, which is the Water Resource Protection Bylaw. B is appropriate to the hydrology, natural topography, soils, and other characteristics of the site to be developed. C will not during construction or thereafter have any adverse environmental impacts on the Water Resource District. And D will not adversely affect an existing or designate a future public well site. Reading C just reminded me, have you got silation barriers and stuff around the construction area?
We can, we have the silt sacks in the catch basins.
Catch basins.
And everything drains, there's a mound here, so nothing drains offsite. There's a mound here, so nothing drains offsite. Everything drains to those catch basins.
Okay.
So, yes, we do have that protected.
So, we do have one, okay. We brought up another thing. During construction, how are you going to... Trucks going to be able to come through during construction?
Yeah, there is a...
Or you're going to block it off?
No, there's gates on each side. So, they can actually go through the back to get to it as well.
No, what I mean is, is a delivery truck coming around here. Now, this is going to be a construction area. And outside of that construction area, they're going to have, I would think, probably a fence to secure it so that it is...
Correct, yeah.
Are you going to have enough room to get your trucks around through there?
So, currently, they come to here to load. And there's a turning radius here, so there won't be any problems for that, those WB sixes and sevens to...
Over here?
Correct.
They come and they back in here. Don't they come in here, drive around, and your water bottle is...
Yeah, they...
And then come in here and back in there?
That is their easiest route, yes. Obviously, they'll have to make some concessions and have to do the turning here. But we do have access in case that... We don't believe that's going to be a problem, but there is access to get through with the double gates on each side. But obviously, we don't want them, especially when it's exposed, for them to drive on stuff that's not stabilized quite yet, so...
Okay. Any other of the board, any other questions of these things? Or can I get a motion to vote that we find it to be affirmative? You have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Vote is unanimous of the five people here. Okay. Under section seven-point-five-point-five-point-one, this is regarding all special permits. Number A, requirement of street-side and rear setback greater than the minimum required by the ordinance. And you just pointed out the only one here would be the sideline distance.
Correct.
B, requirement of screening of parking areas or other parts of the premises from adjoining premises or from street by walls, fences, planning, or other devices as specified by the special permit granting authority. Oh, we got two commercial buildings and whatever they have between them, they seem to be satisfied with it, so... C, modification of exterior features or appearances of the structure, which is what you do when you're putting an addition on, so it is more... Limitation of size and number of occupants, method of time of operation, or extent of facilities. E, regulation of number, design, and location of access drives, which is already a requirement of off-street parking or other special features. And we've already addressed that. So, anybody have any concerns with that? Or can I... If not, can I get a motion?
So...
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, regarding the site plan approval, which will be a recommendation to the building commissioner, which is second section seven-point-two, site plan approval. In going through the... Whereas this thing is just an addition to an add-on, that basically you've got it all covered anyway. Does anybody have any concerns with the site plan approval? If not, can I... I'll entertain a motion. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I go back to the... One minute. I said you were taking away twenty-six.
Correct.
You also talked about taking fifteen, fifty things with...
Correct.
Play area.
Yep.
That fifteen is considered twenty-six.
Correct. The six oh nine is with those both removed, yeah. Sorry, I was...
Even with both of them gone, it's still...
Still...
Long as it's in the pocket.
Okay, so the... The only condition will be the open fuel and oil concerns. And all of the conditions of the original special permit will still be in place. Why don't you put that as also the conditions? Just so that we know that it is there. Now, we need a vote to approve the special permit of which I will ask the individuals so we can get a record that they all... What their vote was. So, I'll entertain a motion to approve the special permit.
Second.
Yes.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor? Mr. Kinnahan?
Aye.
Mr. Nores?
Aye.
Mr. Stutson?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
And Mr. Hurley makes it unanimous of the five persons here. Thank you.
Thank you.
They also have an invoice here for the advertising.
Perfect.
That stops.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Okay. Well, was there any... Anything from the selection?
I don't believe for that one, no. The only one was the Lincoln.
Okay, is there anything? Nothing for this one either, okay. We can do this.
Not going to remember.
Okay.
Are you on the...
Pleasant Street.
Are you on Pleasant or...
Pleasant.
Do you want a second?
I get it.
Pleasant is for me.
I saw the SEA and I knew I was in, and that's what I grabbed from. Now, if you'd put the site right there with big letters where I could read it, I would have done it.
I don't know. See what you do.
He was too busy getting dressed up.
You're right, Larry. You did bring along the person. I knew what was going on. I won't reintroduce ourselves. I hope everybody can remember who we are. But if no idea and you want to ask a question, just point it out. Okay, this is a public notice. I'll start by reading the notice as it appeared in the enterprise on the fifteenth and twentieth, twenty-second of June. Notice here is given pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter forty-eight, Section four-point-six-point-seven-point-one. F, Water Resource Protection District in Section seven-point-two, Site Plan of the Westbridge Road as owned by law. The Westbridge Road Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, June thirty, two thousand and twenty-one, at seven P.M. in the McDonald Brown Conference Room to discuss a plan submitted by Silver Engineering on behalf of ANG Management for the modification to a special permit site plan to construct a five-thousand-three-hundred-and-ninety-square-foot storage warehouse addition to the existing building. The property is located at twenty-eight Pleasant Street. A special permit is required for the activity in the Water Resource Protection District. Site plan review is part of the special permit.
Can I just mention the warehouse in the office space?
Yeah, just mention storage warehouse addition to the existing. Probably the office is a... I don't think it's an office we even need to... A lesser thing. So noted that when you make your presentation...
Rebecca, Silver, simple engineer for Silver Engineering. We have here an addition to an existing warehouse where the office portion that exists will actually be moved to this new portion of warehouse. So, of the five-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand square feet, a hundred-and-seventy-six is actually the new office. Everything now will turn into a warehouse storage for the draper metal to expand their operations and move their materials inside. As part of this, we've shown the required parking that they're going to need. They need ten more spaces for their expanded use. They're going to expand a little bit of their gravel area into pavement. We are capturing the stormwater runoff into a catch basin and into the existing stormwater management system that all flows into an underground chamber system. The roof will flow into a leaching trench on the side. And again, it will overflow into the same infiltration down the south side. All existing... All proposed utilities will be connected through the existing building, so there's no new connections required for this. The materials that are outside now will be moved inside, so that'll help clean up a lot of the area that's already there. We also have some sheet flow that comes from the north side that will be captured in a swale in a trench and again contained within the site in the stormwater management on site. There's no maintenance. There's no need for floor drains or holding tanks. Really all internal. So, if you guys have any questions that I could answer? Lighting will be facing the inside of the usable area, not the outside, because the buddies wouldn't be bothered by the lighting. There's a few egress doors on the north side, only for emergencies. If there was a question?
Anybody have any?
What will primarily be stored in this storage area?
Metals. I can... The client is here now if you'd like to ask him.
I'm just kind of curious what's going to be stored.
Metals. Aluminum, stainless stainless. It's all stored outside.
For security reasons, they're going to be moving it inside.
Much like I was asking on the other ones as far as fueling or open containers.
No.
In fact, this will just be a warehouse. This will not be any of your manufacturing process. Have you... Along the where it abuts the residential properties, do you have any screening proposed?
There is a fence that is kind of in shambles now that will be replaced with a full-fledged stockade fence.
Okay.
Oh, the new fence look like will be... Will be vinyl or be solid?
The answer will come to me in a moment.
Just replace it.
Maybe we're there for replacement, just a cedar fence.
A cedar fence.
Eight foot?
Six.
Six.
It's a four-foot now, so...
Okay, so...
It's an improvement.
No, is that... I thought it was six now, so...
That's wrong.
And there's really no activity on that side. There'll be less activity now.
Yeah, this building blocks any activity from their view now, well, will.
Yeah, but the thing is, on the site plan...
Yes, it's screening.
It requires when it's a commercial and a residential use to be a...
There is a fence. It will be replaced.
It remains a fence to be replaced.
There's a remain. We have gone to Concom for a stormwater permit. We did get that approved as well.
Okay.
We'll be using the silt sacks and catch basins to protect. It's again all down gradient, so it's really only going to the catch basin. There's enough pavement around to keep the trucks from tracking off. No need for a tracking pad.
Yeah, it's a kind of a maze of driveways when you...
Nothing... You don't do... I'm assuming you don't do anything with your equipment? And you don't do any maintenance on your equipment in this area?
No.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is it anybody in the public have any questions, concerns? Can we answer? Can we get answers for you? I'll take that as a no. Therefore, I will go on to the... Listen, the findings that we have to make. First off, a special permit. Section four-point-six-point-nine-point-three. A is consistent with the purpose and intent of section four-point-six. B is appropriate to the hydrology, natural topography, soils, and other characters of the site to be developed. C will not during construction or thereafter have any adverse environmental impacts on the water resource district. And D will not adversely affect an existing or designated future well. I'll entertain a motion to make a finding on those.
So...
All those in favor of affirming those?
Aye.
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 Vote is unanimous? Then we'll go on. Conditions for special permit. The general conditions. A, this is section seven-point-five-point-five-point-one. A, requirements of street-side and rear setbacks greater than the minimum requirement required by this ordinance. Requirement of screening of parking areas, other parts of the premises from adjoining properties from the street, walls, fences, planning, or other devices as specified. I think that's where replacing the fence will take care of that. Modification of exterior features or appearances of the structure. Limitation of size, number of occupants, method of time of operation. E, regulation of number, design, and location of access drives or other site traffic features. And F, requirements of off-street parking or other special features beyond the minimum required by this or other applicable ordinances. Entertain a motion to affirm this?
So... Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we got a good site plan. Deep down the corner, the page is over. Just can't find it. So, for site plan review, we have to review this and make a recommendation to the building commissioner to the effect that he should grant a building permit for this structure, which is section seven-point-two. I'll entertain a motion to recommend approval?
So... Second.
All those in favor? Can anybody think of any conditions other than putting in no dispersing of oils or gasoline on the site, which is pretty much what we do on all of them?
No, I'm not part of that, but the fence, replacing the fence doesn't show on the plan, so.
Okay, so, so the fence, one of the requirements will be the fence for the adjacent residential properties. Mr. Donahue and a Mr. Bibby shall be replaced. Okay. Entertain a motion to approve the special permit and the site plan review?
So.
Second.
Okay, I will individually, uh, request the vote. Mr. Kenningham?
Aye.
Mr. Noiz?
Aye.
Mr. Stetson?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Hurley? Are you all vote?
Yes.
Vote is unanimous. And somewhere I have for you, an invoice.
I got it, I got it, I got it.
Figure it out later. Okay. The next thing on the agenda, this is site plan review. This is not a special permit, it's not a public hearing, but, uh, all our meetings are open to the, to the, to the public. And, uh, and we will, uh, you will have an opportunity to, to ask any questions or speak if you, if you so do, so desire as, as if it was a public hearing. We, we don't disbar anybody from coming in. What we have is a site plan review.
Could I ask a question, just as a point of order?
Um, yeah. Okay. This, the vote on this only requires a simple majority, so three votes of the five is sufficient. One of our members, Mr. Noiz, uh, also works for the, for the town in reviewing, engineering, traffic, uh, plans and so forth. And so he is going to be recusing himself from acting on the board. Although, if a question comes up regarding, this would be the, the lights going in at Lincoln and, and West Center Street. If the question does come up there, uh, we may call the call upon him because he has, he has been reviewing it on behalf of the, the board of selectmen. And, uh, for the, for the record, he has submitted, uh, a written, uh, explanation of his, his involvement and concerns, which has been submitted to the town clerk and to the, uh, town attorney. And, uh, and has been submitted to this board for the, and the, in the, in the record. I guess I got it. With that, we can begin with the presentation. Oh, uh, Mr. White, you, you had.
Yeah, hi, um, Matt Waters, on behalf of Colvia. I just, um, wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity to, um, present the letter that I had submitted earlier. And then to the, to the plan board. That, should I, should I do that now?
No, no, let's, let him make his, his, uh, his presentation and then, as I said, you.
Okay.
You as, you as an abbot, uh, will also have an opportunity. Mr. Silva?
Good evening. I'm Lawrence Silva from Silver Engineering Associates. On behalf of, of Devoe Artello, who is the developer of the project itself. The project, uh, obviously, uh, we know that it's a large, large parcel of land that was owned by, been owned by Halsey Otis for many years. Sitting south of the, of West Center Street. And, um, and then aboard is Lincoln Street. So it's a seventy-three acre parcel of land. And, um, and, uh, what we're proposing to do is to, is to build a three hundred and fifty thousand square foot warehouse, which is, this, the property is owned industrial. The warehousing use is a matter of right, uh, in the industrial district. As part of, um, developing, um, as far as, as it's showing the overall, and that is the aerial showing of the location of the building and associated with the drainage and, uh, just so that you get an overview. This is the building here, Lincoln Street is here. And these, these areas here are drainage basins associated with the project. This is a access up in this area here to the subject system, which will be located further up on the site. There's another drainage basin in this area here. There's also a connecting road here which, um, goes to the existing, uh, shell station. Where there is a sixty-foot right-of-way, uh, or easement that has been part of the property, uh, since, uh, since it, since the shell property was sold off. That sixty-foot easement was, uh, part of it. So, a- as part of, uh, developing this site, uh, there were a number of considerations. Uh, one was that the town was concerned about, um, the intersection of Lincoln Street and West Center Street. So in order for the town to be, the town fathers to be okay with the development of this property, they insisted that the road would have to be relocated to be opposite Crescent Street where it would be signalized. I mean, I'm sure you've all experienced trying to get out under West, West Center Street. If you ever tried to go out and take a left off of Lincoln Street. It's, uh, pretty, pretty much impossible right now. When the relocation takes place, which is really going through the Dempsey property, uh, it's pretty much where the driveway is now. The rear starts at the end of the property, just past the urban property. It will, it'll, Lincoln Street will swing in, go through. The house that's on the Dempsey property will be removed. And just to the, uh, east of that house, there's a garage which is basically center line of where the new Lincoln Street will be located. Uh, these changes to Lincoln Street were endorsed by the, the town at town meeting. The selectmen were authorized to pursue, um, making these changes to the roadway. So that is, that's critical, uh, to the development of the site itself. Without that change, uh, it, it really would not be, um, possible to actually make this work from a traffic point of view and from a, from an access point of view. Uh, the other thing, uh, that was critical to the development of this property was, um, uh, bringing adequate water to the site. The water main that's on Lincoln Street, I believe, is a four-inch dating back to like nineteen oh four. Somewhere around there. And, uh, as part of this development, the water main that's at West Street right here is a twelve-inch water main that comes down. That twelve-inch water main will be extended, brought down the new Lincoln Street alignment and brought down the site, uh, down on Lincoln Street in order to serve, uh, the project. But that's a, a really significant improvement in order to help water in the whole area by bringing that twelve-inch water main. From a, big difference from an old four-inch, uh, main to a twelve-inch, a brand-new twelve-inch main. Um, in, uh, in addition, back in the fall, the town, uh, applied for a grant, uh, to do improvements on the road itself and including this relocation, but basically to do improvements along West Center realignment. And that, they did not qualify on the grant. So there, this part of this project, the developers actually bearing the cost of making these roadway improvements with an agreement with the town that, um, uh, that there will be some reimbursement of the money spent to do that as part of a TIF and so forth, but I don't really know the details of the TIF. So of the seventy-three acres that, um, that make up the site, fifty acres is, is uplands and the remaining twenty-three acres is, uh, is wetlands. So primarily, the area to the south and off, and off in this view is where a lot of those wetlands are located. And these, um, these detention basins, uh, which are very, uh, very large in size, are actually designed in such a way as they basically outlet to, to the, to the wetlands adjacent to Route twenty-four. What I wanna, uh, say is that we're very careful in our design of the site to make sure that none of the runoff from this building has impacted anyone that's along the stretch. Okay, so basically, everything, roof drainage from the building, this section coming this way, will find its way to this basin, which will then be piped out to the back. All this, you can see this, there's a massive amount of drainage collection, which is handling both the surface flow from the parking lot and also from the roof and bringing it back and controlling it through these basins. No water is discharging in the direction of any of the homes, any of the other properties that are along, uh, Lincoln Street. The, uh, the other, um, significant feature here is because of that accessway in, uh, through, uh, the, the shell property, there is the ability to have traffic that comes in off of, off of the highway, to have a truck. Instead of a truck coming down to the intersection here in order to find its way in, we'll be able to come through the access road here in order to be able to come into the site itself. So those, those are some of the critical features as it relates, um, to the, to the project itself. Um, there is, um, landscaping. Um, that's, this is the facade of the building itself so that you can see what the building will look like. And I apologize, we didn't really have a color up on that. On this from the Hawk, Hawk, um, Landscape Group is the one that did the landscaping design. Um, and they did not give us one that was a color up. But it basically shows that there's a lot of planting out front near Lincoln. This is the woods area that will remain. All the rest of this will be planted in here in order to buffer some of the view of, of the building. Although the building is substantial, we'll not about it, it's a substantial building. Um, but there will be, uh, care taken to, uh, to try to have a, a nice appearance in the front. And the parking that you see along the front is, is automobile parking only. Okay, the trucking, the truck, uh, loading docks, which, uh, you can see in the backside of here. Yes, well, or you can see this. So the back, so the back view of the building itself, that's where the loading docks are. They're not visible to Lincoln Street. What you see from Lincoln Street is the office, office section of the, of the building. That's the facade that you see. So that's, uh, kind of an overview as to what, uh, what we're proposing here. The only other thing I think I may have missed was, uh, lighting maybe? Uh, lighting, uh, photometric, um, design of the lighting was also done by, was done by the electrical engineer for the project. And so, photometrics were done in order to show, uh, and to make sure that the proposed lighting, uh, does not have, uh, basically stray lighting that leaves the site and causes an impact, uh, to the neighborhood. So the lights are designed to be downlights, so they're shielded in order to make sure that the lights are not going off and they're not causing glare to, um, to the neighboring properties. I think that's probably, that's probably, uh, a, a good overview, I think, at this point. To lead us into any questions that, uh, the board members might have.
When you, uh, there's gonna be no detention basins or anything in the front of the building, right? Everything's gonna be in the back?
There is collection in the front.
It's not, is it gonna be like down on Elm Street in Bridgewater?
No, not a deep basin in the front. It's a very, it's a fairly shallow, uh, basin in the front. Uh, because what we're doing is, we're basically taking advantage of a large strip of land for water, uh, uh, for cleaning water, for basically water quality. So the wider the strip you have that the water is able to go across, you get more credit for the water quality part. So that we have that strip happening and then, once we get past that strip, we have a, uh, it's more like a collector, um, where's the best view of it? I guess in here. Yeah, in here. So this section in here allows for the water to just go across. Okay, and once it gets into here, this is just, it's a, it's only a two-foot, I'd say it's two feet deep. That is, and it's the highest. And there's a collective, uh, pipe in here, which then takes the water from there, brings it in, brings it into the drainage system and brings it to the back. Okay, so we're, we're cleaning the water first, and that's more for cleaning than it is for anything else.
Okay, now is there any, gonna be any other exit on to Pleasant Street? Other than, I mean, Lincoln Street as you go down towards Pleasant?
The warehouse has two driveways, one here and one here.
Okay. So the trucks can, can come out onto Lincoln, right?
They can come out to Lincoln, they will have to come out to Lincoln.
Right, now if they go out and head, come out and go right and head down Lincoln Street towards Pleasant, are there any bridges, culverts or anything that are gonna, uh, have to be changed for the weight of the truck? Cause if they come out and go that way, they go up Pleasant Street and, and can get back onto twenty-four awful easy.
I can't say that we can prohibit them from going that way, but the encouragement is to go the other way. Cause that's the reason why all these changes are being made.
And at the town meeting, the developer representative of the developer.
Bridge Hotline. Bridge Hotline?
Yeah. Said that no trucks over two ton will go right. Anything will enter, anything else will enter and leave at the traffic lights.
Well, yeah, and that's what the, the goal is, is to have.
And he, he was, but he was, he had mentioned, you know, it was gonna be posted.
And that's, and that's fine. That can be posted, uh, that can be posted at the exit driveways? To say, you know, that there's no right turn for vehicles exceeding or whatever?
Cause there is a, there is a culvert that crosses, uh, Pleasant Street, or South Elm Street.
Close to twenty-four?
No, before you get to go onto the, under, go up towards Pleasant.
Yeah.
There's a culvert that crosses right there. And there is land, they own land out to there and there's gonna be no other exits, so.
Oh, no.
Okay, but there is a culvert there that crosses South Elm Street.
Yeah, so, so this whole project is designed on going to the.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying.
And I think signage and enforcement are gonna take care of the rest of it.
It includes construction and everything. He was saying that the construction trucks are gonna enter and exit off of one oh six. No driving the back roads like we had the problem. When, when he built the other building, the town finally had to put load restrictions on a number of roads to stop them from doing it.
I can't speak to what he said at that meeting, cause I don't have a total, I was there at the meeting, but I don't recall what he actually said at that point. If that's what you're saying he said, then that's, that's his testimony at that point for, for his, you know, what he's willing to have for constraints.
I mean, it's to his advantage, traveling the back roads isn't gonna be an advantage.
Well, also the timing of when the building is built. Well, also, the timing of when the building is built and the changes are made to Lincoln Street are such that it will require police details at the current Lincoln Street intersection during construction until that relocated road is is in place in order to make, you know, for safe ingress and egress for everyone. So he will have to bear the cost of police details during that timeframe until that relocated Lincoln Street is in operation.
But there is a, there is a culvert across South Elm Street.
Yeah, those will be the, that's the problem.
Yeah, I know, but there is a culvert there, and it drains heading towards the.
Are you saying that there's an issue with that culvert, or?
No, but there would, there would, probably would be if they, I mean, there was enough trucks traveling over it until they get stopped.
I see.
But.
But I think posting it, conditioning it and posting it will at least give the enforcement part of it what they came in in order to make sure it doesn't get violated that way.
A lot of people don't read them.
Well, but when they get stopped for doing what they're not supposed to. I mean, listen, I've had trucks stopped myself on a job that I was engineer on at Bridgewater State University.
Yeah.
Because the guy left there with his load uncovered.
Yeah, no, I understand.
You know what I'm saying? I have stopped.
That would be, I mean, if if it would be a lot simpler for them to reconstruct it and have them go out, take a right and go down and fix that, and make it so they can go up South Elm and onto Pleasant and run around to Twenty-Four.
I think, I think, and I don't know what we might hear tonight, but I think there's a lot of concern or opposition potentially to having the flow go in that direction. But, I understand.
There were twenty-seven trucks that went up Lincoln Street today.
Excuse me, please wait to be monitored.
No, all right, no, I'm just saying, but there is a culvert, that's why I'm saying.
Okay.
Okay, I, the selectmen, they're the only ones that we respond, and we give out, I think it's something like seventeen, people get notified for site plan review, and usually the selectmen are the only ones that reply, which which they did. I'd like to read their their concerns. Proper noise and lighting mitigation as to not disturb the neighbors. Incorporation of natural shrubbery to maintain the local aesthetics. Incoming delivery vehicles must enter through the Shell gas station entrance. Vehicles must make a left-hand turn onto Lincoln Street when exiting. And limit overnight hours of operation in delivery. Loading docks must be as far away from the residential area as possible. Let's just kind of go down the noise and lighting, you've already said how you've gone it down. Now, the way I see this, all of the loading docks are going to be on the other side of the building.
That's correct.
So there'll be no loading docks on on the Lincoln Street.
Absolutely.
And so they'll be making noise through Twenty-Four, which is already noisy to be heard.
Actually, actually, from a noise point of view, once this building is up and operational, there will be less noise heard on Lincoln Street from Route Twenty-Four, because the actual building will be providing a buffer to some of that room noise that occurs.
I believe that, because when they tore the old high school down, I got all kinds of noise from One-O-Six. I hardly knew One-O-Six was out there. I'm five hundred feet away from One-O-Six, and it was, and it was quiet, they'd hear it down, I hear, I hear every vehicle that goes by there, so a building, and how tall is this going to be, thirty-foot high, like?
Yeah.
Probably like the other one, so it's, it'd be higher than the than the school was, so buildings do do shade, shield you from noise. Okay, the shrubbery, I'm sure they'll be doing the, you know, the the locals, incoming deliveries from the Shell station up. This will be a right-hand turn coming from Route Twenty-Four into that that entrance only. It will not be for somebody coming from the East, from East Bridgewater or Bridgewater or Brockton that comes down.
They have to come through Lincoln Street.
They would have to come through Lincoln Street, because that's all we need, is to have them try to make a left-hand turn to get into it. So I don't, I understand, and I concur with them for traffic coming off of Route Twenty-Four, but I just wanted.
Yeah.
You know, let's make a, and any vehicles exiting, do you, do you show any signage on here for the, making the left-hand turns on your plans?
We don't actually show the signage for that.
You know, placement of signage. Yeah, I know we've, I know we have it at the Cumberland.
Yeah.
We have it up at Honeydew, and just so that they didn't know where to put some the signs on.
Right, and what I'm hearing now is that on those exits on Lincoln, that they will be no trucks, right-hand turn, basically, right? So in other words, a vehicle, passenger vehicle could turn right.
Oh, yeah.
But for truck traffic, all truck traffic must go left, back to the intersection.
Anything over what, two and a half?
I don't think it'll get into, I mean, it'll probably just say all truck traffic.
Well, the only thing is you can't restrict if it's the delivery to that direction.
It's a delivery.
I mean, if it's, if it becomes a, say, Amazon-type warehouse.
Right.
If they've got vans coming out and their delivery is in that direction, I don't think you can restrict it. It's like the street.
So that gets back to the size of the vehicle.
Yeah.
Yeah, so maybe we have to say over shit.
Yeah, we're trying not to introduce any more commercial traffic going to the side streets than it already, already is, and everybody knows how to get around, around market basket and and the center of town by the side streets, so. But hopefully, we can keep some of the trucks on. Limit overnight operation hours, we don't know what the, we don't even know who's really going in there, so we don't.
Right, and I would say that there's always the possibility that there'll be something in the wee hours, but the normal, normal operations would be in pretty much standard kind of hours, maybe seven to seven, or still like that. But I think that there's, there's going to be, because some of these trucks that may be coming in will probably, you know, there'll be some that may come in in the middle of the night that, you know, anticipate, but it comes in.
But they'll all be on the other side of the building.
Everything's on the other side.
And then they said loading docks must be as far away as possible from residential areas, which it, it already is. Could you, just for the, kind of show us where in in this area, like the distances, how far the building is off the residential area and how far the roadway is, because it looks as if it's fairly substantial in the distance.
So this is one inch equals eighty. So on this side behind, behind the three lots that are on just north of the site itself, that's around eighty feet or so, eighty to almost two hundred feet to the access road that that really doesn't have a lot of, a lot of activity going on there, but that's about eighty here to about two hundred in this area. And it has some, has some drainage that's occurring in there in between, nice green, you know, just, it's, it's just detention, it's not ponded water, it's water that's allowed to go through or stall, and that's what stays green otherwise. On the other side, let's see, so on the side to the south, it is, it's a little bit tighter in this corner here, but there is some vegetation in here. I think the tightest spot is just this one corner right here. And and that's all residential, I mean, that's all automobile parking, but there will be a truck turning movement that would be coming out this way.
Why wasn't the entrance put up further, the bottom entrance? Because that doesn't, to me, your first entrance on Lincoln Street, right in the middle of the plan, why isn't it up on the other end of the houses?
So over here?
That, to me, the way you've got it drawn, is not an easy access for tractor trailers.
And it doesn't affect the people, because these comes out here, it's going to go by homes. Up here, it's not, it's coming out to where there's no home.
If you had it come out next to your, this, I don't know, it's almost, almost just opposite, right, almost to the, almost to the end, right there, right there. Why can't the entrance, instead of being down and, and you could be straight in, it would be easy in and easy out for tractor trails, because you could come straight in.
Well, we had a third entrance at one time, the client had elected to not have an entrance upon this side.
I don't like the entrance that's there, because I don't think it's, it's going to be an easy exit, never mind it's taken up more truck driver.
Well, you can't, so when you talk about it being an exit, it really, to come out here is right at that.
Yeah, which would go directly across.
To the light, to the light.
And if you go to light.
But it's too close to the, to the traffic coming in from that intersection, and also any kind of stacking that would be occurring at at the Lincoln Street. That's why they're trying to keep it away from this intersection here by keeping it down the road. That was the thought process.
Will, will a California-style tractor trailer make the turn down at that one in the middle? Sixty-three footers?
Going in, not coming out.
Yeah, but you already said that tractor trailers coming from the east have got to come down Lincoln Street.
Right, and the ones that are coming from from the east are going to come down Lincoln, but they are, they were going to be coming in this way to go in and out of that side. That's what, that's what the, the goal was.
I would rather see that entrance eliminated and all traffic go in and out of the upper end, because I think it's going to be a better fit for tractor trailers and the public.
And these, and the homeowners down here won't have to listen to the trucks coming out, because they'll be all up here.
There's a great, great piece of equipment that was generated a number of years ago called GPS. And the only problem is, is truck drivers don't, they depend so much on GPS that they end up stuck in the woods, because the road says, go straight. And it's only as bright as the guy that's operating.
Right.
And I'm trying to keep it simple with the KISS method. And just, I think it'd be less, less problem if it all entered, if the, well, be the gnawing end of the property.
They'd still have their two exits.
They could come in and out that one.
Yeah.
And the other one could be just, the exit down the other end would be strictly cars and small, the rollover vehicles that have to go the other direction.
For the workers.
I mean, I, I think that one in the middle is, it's not right.
Have they ever, I don't know if the town, has the town ever put up a thing for traffic on Pleasant, on Lincoln Street or Pleasant Street down to South Elm and down through the river to back into?
Traffic counter.
Yeah, traffic counter. I used to be able to back out of my driveway. Now, I got to look up the street, make sure that, and back out, and by the time I get backed out and headed down the street, there's two cars behind me.
So I see your, I see your suggestion, and I.
I see, I see more problems with this middle entrance, if it was up here.
You're saying the middle entrance, you mean, you're talking about the northern entrance that we're showing?
That one, yeah, the northern entrance.
You're saying moving, are you saying leave this one and try to eliminate that one?
No, no, leave the one.
Leave this one?
Yeah.
Try to eliminate this one?
Yeah.
And move it here.
And just tie it into the the roadway that's coming in from the Shell station. Then your truck traffic is going to go in and up, going to come in from the Shell station, and then in and out to Lincoln Street from the other direction.
Right.
I don't see what, I mean, in looking and watching the property and checking the property, I've been in there a number of times.
Yeah.
You're not talking as if you're going through a wetlands. I think you've got more wetlands problems with the one in the middle.
So there was some, yeah.
I do, I need to tell you that.
I would say that I think it's, it's a, it's a great suggestion to do it that way, and.
That was the impression I got talking to the gentleman when he presented it at town meeting.
Well, that, there was a point in time when we did have a driveway on that side.
And it just me, I just think it's a simpler law, then that spreads out your entrances as far as the traffic.
Right.
I mean, if this had been built as the Mansfield Crossing, that it was supposed to be that another guy wanted to, you're talking thousands and thousands of cars. This here, you're probably talking maybe a hundred tractor trailers, and depending on what the company is.
Yeah.
Maybe a hundred.
Yeah, the traffic cars that McMahon came up with were not, not crazy numbers.
I mean, tractor trail, distribution places.
Lot less than retail and other kinds of use.
Distribution places, it's busy at night and in the morning, when everybody leaves, and then it's bits and pieces, all the rest is done.
Right, right. Okay, I would suggest to you that conditions of that effect, I don't think that, I don't think that that would be a real problem.
Do you want to talk to?
I could go try and make a call to them as this meeting is on. I could try to do that.
All right, okay, I was going to say we could continue for that, you know, if it's, but let's, let's, let's keep going, we've got a couple more things. The, but Cobia, which is the the Shell station, I received a letter, and in fact, I said it to you, did you get it, Donna?
Yeah, I think it's there.
Yeah, it is. And so their attorney, Mr. Matt Waters, is here and would like to speak to us, so I'll give you that opportunity, Mr. Waters.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning board. I'm Matt Waters, on behalf of Cobia. We also have a number of people from Cobia's team here today. Is, I, I guess I just want to clarify, is the, is the letter a part of the record? Is that going to be, is there a plan to have that read into the, to the record?
Well, it'll be, it'll be received, I can, I can, I can read in, or maybe you can paraphrase it rather than even reading, reading the whole thing, maybe you can just paraphrase what it means you're saying.
Well, okay, I mean, I do have, I do have a, you know, an original copy of the letter here as well, and it included an attachment, and we, we made copies of the attachment so that it's a little bit bigger for you to see. Would it be all right to distribute that?
Give some to the people back, too. Give some to the people. Oh, he's not part of that? Okay.
So, yes, as you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, Cobia is the owner of the Shell station on West Center Street, and they, Cobia owns the land over which the easement that has been mentioned runs, and Cobia does intend to redevelop that property in the future as well, to redevelop the gas station and convenience store on that location. And Cobia has been in discussion with the applicant for the site plan here tonight, and we, Cobia's reached an agreement in principle, verbally, with the applicant, by which certain parcels of land, which are identified on that exhibit, will be sold to Cobia, and also the easement area that has been mentioned a few times, will be reduced from sixty feet to thirty feet. So Cobia is, does, does support this project, but only on the condition that this, this agreement, which has been reached verbally, is actually memorialized in writing and signed by all of the the relevant parties. So I just want to make sure that that is on the record. If, if, if this agreement does not become memorialized, then Cobia does reserve any and all rights to object to the project or disapprove of it in the, in the future. then Colbea does reserve any and all rights to object to the project or disapprove of it in the, in the future.
Okay, what, what you're proposing here, we're, we're looking at, at this site. And we know we have access to this site off of, off of 106. And in fact, coming through there is, is very important for the traffic point of view because we, the faster we can get a truck off of 106 is, is eighty feet of, of space being taken up by a vehicle, which is four or five cars. So when we're talking about stacking through the lights and getting people through the lights as fast as possible, it's, it's important. That was one of the reasons. One of the things early on, when we started talking about the lights, was to get the traffic off. In fact, it's the same down at Market Basket. There's a right-hand turn in there to, to get people so they don't have to go all the way down to the lights. They can get in. Get them off the street as fast. So that is, is in there. When we come to your, your site to, I mean, actually, we're gonna be doing a site plan review process for you. At that point, we will configure out exactly how the, how the, the roadway will come out to it. And if, if you, it makes the, the land exchanges you're proposing will be, will be fine. If you don't, you, you have the right to challenge anything if, if you, you want to in, in the future. You're not giving up any lights on that. But I, I wanna try to keep this, this separate. We're, we're looking at this site. They do have a way of getting in through there. It's, it's an easement that's been on the property since it's, was divided off of this property because that wasn't one part of the, the, before Campbell got it. Was part, part of it. So it, it's there, but you know, we, it's, it's in the, it'll be in the record. It's, you know, we understand your, your position.
Okay, understood. I don't know if any, does anybody else, Mike, do you have anything else you wanna?
No, it's just, the one final point was that, you know, this agreement that we've come to with the developer, I think, points in the same direction as you in reducing the sixty-foot easement to a thirty-foot easement to ensure that there's only one-way traffic going back to this distribution facility off of West Center Street. So I think we're, we're both aligned on that as well.
As, as long as, you know, engineering, when, when it comes to how, whatever the reconfiguration, because I think, I got the impression you're, the redoing of the Shell Station is going into a Seasons, a Seasons restaurant, uh, rest, uh, convenience store, excuse me. Is gonna be, be different. So as long as it works.
That's a separate site plan approval process. We, we understand that completely. We're just, we're just bringing this in as sort of an initial concept.
What I'm saying is, we wanna keep that, that separate.
Understood.
And we want, want it to work and as long as it can be demonstrated that it'll be work, because it is only gonna be a one-way. It is. Because we definitely don't want people going out, anybody in here, we've seen people coming out of Market Basket in the right-hand turn only and trying to make a left-hand turn and it just smells the traffic up all over the place. So we, we definitely, whenever you come in here, we want it so that it is, we don't want a ten-foot-high wall, but we want the effect of a ten-foot-high wall to keep people from, from doing this. So. No, I think, I think we understand where you're, you're coming from. We, we realize you're, in fact, you're trying to make a better, a better facility than, than you initially had. I know you put a lot of time in, into it. So, you know, we will certainly understand where you're going and in fact, we look forward to seeing you doing something up there.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Well, Mr. Silver is.
I can field any questions if I have.
Okay, I just gotta say, this is Rebecca. This is the person that makes these beautiful plans. Larry is the proprietor and he, he comes up with the scheme, but this is the artist that, that makes, makes this.
Give me too big a head, don't give me too big a head.
This parcel B, does, have, have the Shell Station always owned that or is that?
No, no.
No.
That's something that'd be a problem.
This is a, that's a separate swap. We own the black one, so we'll be out swapping in the future. We're not there.
The property line is there. Yeah, I understand, but I was gonna say that for the trucks to come in off of and come down, they're gonna have to widen this. Make the truck to make the turn, they can, they're gonna have to.
Yeah.
Which you'll be looking at.
Okay.
Right now, with the sixty feet, they can, they can do it, whatever this modification is.
That most.
Okay, anybody in the, the public, I know you're all concerned here. Are there any questions we can answer?
I have a question.
Okay, could you please introduce yourself?
Rebecca Raposa, do I understand that?
No.
They just suggested that if the plan didn't go through with this company, that that access road would go from sixty feet to thirty feet. Isn't that what you were saying?
Uh, it'd actually be the opposite.
It would go from thirty feet to sixty feet?
We're hoping it goes from sixty feet to thirty feet. We want it to go to thirty feet. So that it's an only, an only in and there's no way for those trucks to get out.
Okay, thank you.
I saw another, yes, sir.
If that roadway.
What's your name, please?
Uh, Dylan Cream, 387 South Elm Street. If that roadway that we're talking about that was proposed by this, by the Septic System does go through, is there a way to make that the only access after a certain time so that late-night traffic is going that way?
All commercial traffic with the one I proposed would be in and out to the traffic light on. It wouldn't be able to be making right-hand turns. Nothing big. You're not gonna be able to, I think you're gonna end up much ahead. You're gonna have more people trying to come down the new intersection. But the only thing we can restrict is the, you know, left turn only. So they're gonna come out and come half, everything will, will go to 106.
Okay, so we.
South Elm Street. I hate to say it, I live on Bryant Street. I've got one of the second busiest shortcuts in town. He said it was closed door, but, and you know, you live with it, but we took and fought and finally got River Street to be made. No commercial stuff and it almost took ninety-nine percent of the truck traffic off it. South Elm Street, I don't know what can be done with it. It's, other than, you know, trying to get better police patrol and enforce things. But there's no, you know, West Bridgewater is a great town, but the problem it is, there's a lot of roads that you have gotta be used because you can't get any other way from point A to point B.
Who unfortunately are, it's just a, it's a real, real, when they put 24 through, if you don't wanna go on 24, you can get off in Bridgewater and you can come up Elm Street and Scotland Street and, and Lincoln Street or Pleasant Street. And then from that exit on 24 up to the one at Belmont Street and Brockton, you can go up Manly Street and, and, and do it. So you have these, these ways and they're, they're right there. They're within, you know, a few hundred feet of Route 24. And everybody knows it. And, and somebody said about the GPS, if, if it's an accident on there, the first thing the GPS is gonna do is they're gonna bring everybody along those route. It's, it's, we can't cure everything and, you know, we, we try not to make anything worse, but we, but those streets are there. But we don't wanna see the traffic coming out of here. We, we don't want to put any more traffic on South Elm and Scotland Street. On, on, we have to already. When you get on the other side, Pleasant Street isn't an industrial zone. It was, you know, that whole area was pretty much industrial on there, but we're, we're trying not to do it. That's why, you know, the, having to come into the Shell Station, get traffic off of the street, that's why lining these, these roads up so we can get out there. This'll be an easy way for them to get back out with the lights there. So that, that'll be the easiest way. And people will always take the easiest way. With these, these lights in there, it's gonna make a great improvement for, for traffic moving around and getting them out. It'll be easier for them to, for somebody to come out of here, go out, get on Route 24 and get, get out on 104. Say they, they, they come here and the next one they wanna go to is Home Depot down there. They'll be able to come out here, make a turn, get on 24 and drive sixty-five, seventy miles an hour already like the rest of them do. And get out down there quicker than they can by going down, down Scotland Street, down, down through that area. So we're, we're trying to make it, you know, we're trying to aim the people at, at the way we want them to go. You know, we put signs up there, whether they read the sign at some point or the word number, said they don't, people will read the signs or they don't.
River Street is, is, once you come South Elm and get on River, it's, there's agriculture from the beginning on River till you get almost to the, the park. I mean, there's horses on the street, there's equipment on the street. I mean, we've got equipment that goes on the road, that comes down the road, takes the whole road. And the people who stop in the middle of the road, you know, they don't know enough to pull off into a driveway or whatever. And it's just horses, agriculture, it's just there. And I've had people, I back out of the driveway and go to the, to the farm and they're passing me and I'm going twenty-five miles an hour, almost thirty, and, and they're passing me before I get, you know, they're in a hurry. If I wanna get rid of that car, I'd pull and run into the ditch.
Steve Bochamp, I live at seventeen Lincoln. I got a couple of concerns. First one is traffic. There were twenty-seven trucks that went down my street today, today, a Wednesday. That was just today. And the people fly down Lincoln Street too, you know. I mean, by the time they get to my house, some of these people are going sixty, seventy miles an hour. But traffic is a big concern. The other one is light pollution. I know you said you've got a lot of things planted around there. But I'm like right.
We're the middle of the three.
We're like in the middle of the three exits, you know what I mean? And I'm, I, I know that in the fall, when there's no leaves on the tree, there's gonna be light pollution. Even with the lights that aim down, because even on Pleasant Street, I can see those lights on Pleasant Street from those new buildings. So I'm worried about that. I'm also worried about air quality, because if you're gonna have a bunch of tractor trailers going in and out of there, it's got, it's bound to affect the air quality in the area. And despite what people have said, there's a lot more wetlands out there. Where you've got that big drainage thing in the back, that's along Route 24, there used to be a couple of ponds out there, three of them. And there's a couple of springs out there too. And it, when it rains, I have standing water in the property next to me. And if you go out into the fields, they did the perk tests right by Lincoln Street, but they didn't go further back in the fields and do any of the perking back there. I guarantee you it wouldn't perk. When they dug all the pits, all the test things for the perk test, they did it right off Lincoln Street. It's dry there. You go up maybe two hundred feet, it's all puddles. When it rains heavy, there's little ponds back there.
Thank you. Would you, were you able to get a talk to him?
I did talk with him. He's concerned about committing to a change in that driveway for a couple of reasons. One is that there's no guarantee that this will be a single tenant in the building. So if the building goes to two tenants, you know what I'm saying, that to eliminate that other driveway in the middle there would be somewhat of a, of a problem to him because they may, one may be taking fifty percent of the building, the other one may take the other fifty percent of the building. So they're kinda restricting by saying having one driveway down on the, on the, on the left side there, that that would be problematic. As far as the driveway further up, the, in the future, there is the potential for a retail site on the corner. Okay, and so the concern is, is that if he put a driveway up in the, that area south of where I'm showing the Septic, how would that affect a future driveway for a retail use at that corner? He didn't want it to be such that if he puts a driveway there, that he would not be able to get another driveway for a retail use, which he doesn't know if that's two years, five years, ten years from now, he doesn't really know what it will be. Okay, it's not like there's something in the works. But he knows that if he were to have a driveway where you're suggesting, that driveway cannot be used for any kind of retail use. Because that would be an industrial-type drive. So he doesn't, so that's his concern is what would happen with another location if he wanted to have another driveway later.
The problem with, if you're gonna develop the corner piece of property, you're already rerouting Lincoln Street. And I call it one-stop shop. Getting in and out onto 106 unless the traffic plan, which you know a lot more than I do, is gonna allow for traffic to get in and out of that corner piece of property.
Would probably be an in for the most part.
And then your out would just come down around.
Well, you'd have to have an in and out on Lincoln Street. You'd have maybe, just like we're talking about on this thing, you'd have to have an in maybe coming in for eastbound traffic that wants to go to, say, a retail use. And then as far as the second driveway for a retail use on that corner, would have to have both in and out. So the concern is to, where will that be and how will that affect, you know, if he were to try to put a, a driveway up here? So he was trying to keep the industrial use activity down the road and keep that other corner up there so that he doesn't know what's gonna occur, so he doesn't really wanna bring that into the industrial.
There'll be something there because.
Well, it's got five hundred feet.
What's that?
He's got five hundred feet off of 106 for his commercial property.
That, that's correct. But if he were to put a driveway where you're saying, now how far away could a retail driveway be for the, you know what I'm saying? You'd be creating.
I don't understand what's the difference whether they come out off of the one on from that was, just say like if it's a McDonald's, okay? They're coming in on, on, from 106, they come in, okay? They come out and they go to the light.
The one that shows, the one that we use for meat burn, which, that one there, is that shown here? The one that shows the retail, because when we had to, when we went to meat burn, that's Environmental Protection Agency. And that's, that process is still going right now. They're finishing up on that. We have to show, even though you don't know what's gonna happen, you have to kinda show what would be a full build out of the site. So you have to do some pie in the sky thinking about what could happen and it was, doesn't show the retail?
No.
Oh, okay. So that, the view, let me see the view that we have. This door shows a little bit of the paint. Okay, so on that site, so what we're saying is, if this area up here were used for retail in the future, it's gonna need that driveway in and out. And probably gonna be, we'll probably be in this area here, go around where the Septic is to come into the retail.
Which would be in the area where I would propose it. So the, the driveways could be the same?
No, but that's what he's saying, is that he can't, he can't get a, an industrial user to share a driveway with a retailer. They don't want us to share it with a retailer. If it's industrial use, they want it, the driveway to be for the industrial use, not to be shared. Also, the retail people that are out there, they're not gonna wanna share it with an industrial use as well. So what he's saying is, because, because of that, he, he really doesn't wanna commit to say, number one, he doesn't wanna lose that driveway. But he's saying, to say that this would be the principal driveway, the only way that a driveway, he's saying. the only way that a driveway he's saying could be in here is if there was also the ability to have that second driveway for me too.
So that's up to a discussion with us, when and if he wants to do something with a commercial property?
But if he were to, the only thing he knows right now is that industrial, that's the only thing he knows.
Yeah, and that's all we know.
Right, so for him to say, okay, I'll put my driveway here, things come along and they don't work with that, he's now committed to a driveway way up here for that, for the building that's down on that side. That's why he's saying that he's, he's not, uh, he's not comfortable with that kind of commitment.
He doesn't agree with that?
That's, that's, you know, that's what he, that's what I got out of him just now. Of course he was high, because I didn't have, I can only give him sort of a picture when we were to where we were talking stuff. But he understood it. And like I said, he's concerned about what the retailer would say in the future, if they were to go on this corner, they're gonna say they, they won't share it with industrial, because he's had that happen in other, other states when he's done a job.
But this is in California.
What's that?
Nothing, nothing.
No, but he, his jobs are not just, he's based it, but his jobs are all over. So because this may be split, he, he really doesn't feel as though he could eliminate one of these, because that would be, if this was split in, uh, in some proportion forty, sixty, fifty, fifty, it could be additional.
I have no problem with the lower one. I just don't think the one in the middle is designed right to make the corner. If you're gonna have tractor trailers going in and out of that location.
We see them all coming in there, they go out there, we saw them all coming out the other one, but that gets back to his tenants and how they actually use it. The problem is you don't have, you don't have a specific user yet, you know what I'm saying? So, and the types of uses, I, I'm good into this on the one we're doing in Bridgewater, which is a smaller one. But it's the same thing, it's, uh, they, these are almost, I don't wanna say they're spec, but they're almost like spec, okay? Like the one that he did in Bridgewater, um, he didn't have a tenant for quite a while. I mean, he's just finalizing leases now for it, and that thing's been up for over a year, you know what I'm saying? They build that into their pro forma, that's a lot of money to build the pro forma, that's gonna carry all that. But that's how they do it, because they know that it takes some time to get the right tenant, to either take the whole building or majority of the building. And in this case here, he ended up with, with two tenants that are taking that building on Elm Street. So, uh, that's the feedback I got, that's all I can tell you, that's the feedback I got from him.
Hi. Marilyn Raleigh, four-four-eight West Center Street in West Bridgewater, also a member of the town ADA committee. I'm sorry to hear that you don't get communication, because I know we get the plans and we go over them and we spent a great deal of time on this one, I'm not sure if you've got any communications back in mind. But one of the things we noticed was that there were only three handicap spots in the front. And yet I have here your environmental modification form, where you're expecting a hundred and fifty cars. And then over here in the back of that same form, you're tracking about five hundred and twenty-eight parking spots. So actually, if you are dealing with a hundred and fifty spots.
Yeah, we have to have.
You need to have more handicap spots.
Correct.
And another thing we noticed were that, looking at the plans, it might be too early to look at the plans for this, but we're very concerned with handicap bathrooms, and we didn't see any bathrooms, so.
You're talking about the architectural part?
Well, as, as I say, what we saw, but.
You had the architectural plans that you.
We had, but we get the same plans, uh, it's by law that the ADA gets the same plans.
Right.
And those are the things that, those types of things are very, we're very concerned about. And, uh, the parking spots, we only saw three in the front there, and then.
It's more than that, no, is it?
It's more than that, I don't know if I remember the requirements needed. And the ENF form is for the whole build, which was the three hundred and fifty, the one hundred, and then the retail, so it was all parking. So although that says five hundred and something.
Yeah.
This portion, I think we showed three hundred and ninety-five.
This one was four hundred and eighty-three thousand square feet.
Yeah, that's the whole build.
When, when do you plan on, on Plan C two zero? It says, uh, including eight handicap spaces.
Yeah, just, there's north and south, I had split it in case there were two tenants.
Yeah, there's, there are eight, eight handicap accessible spaces.
Yeah, there's four on the north and four on the south.
Okay.
I don't remember.
Right readily available to entrances, I think.
Yes, right here.
Okay.
My mother would kick that.
Good for her. Okay.
And, and Marilyn.
Yes.
As far as the inside, same plan, we look from the buildings out around. We do not look at all in, in, inside the building, the building commissioner.
But we do.
Yeah, you know, we, definitely, you do.
And it's very important.
I, I'm, I'm, I'm just stating, you're trying to say that that's not part of it, it'll be your, your board in and the building commissioner will, to do it.
But we do watch.
I know you do. And, and that's.
And rightfully so.
Good. Thank you.
And Marilyn, did you have a question?
I think Quinn, uh, Plain Street. I, I was wondering, when you did the study with all the traffic, was it this, at COVID time, compared to like now, which is probably nineteen eighty traffic?
I, I, first I wanna indicate that the traffic part of this project is done by McMahon Associates. Okay, McMahon is a traffic engineering company. We did not do the, uh, the traffic part of it. McMahon, uh, their study, uh, because of the COVID issues, I believe, there was some guidance from the state that allows them to use, um, traffic counts from a different time. Okay, uh, that was non-COVID. Okay, because as you say, if you use COVID time, that's kinda like, that's kinda like all the time I did projects, when I do them in Bridgewater and somebody tried to use numbers when the university wasn't in session. You know, I would say, hey, well, those don't, are valid. But I do know that McMahon, what is, what does it say in McMahon's?
As a result of the COVID, uh, historic traffic counts and data from the Old Colony Planning Council within the site vicinity were referenced and used to complete the study. Using historic data to complete traffic analysis and traffic impact studies has been deemed an appropriate course of action by Mass DOT.
Does it say?
It doesn't say.
No. Of course not.
Of course not.
And Old Colony's work wasn't that long ago.
No.
Old Colony did a review of your corridor.
Two thousand sixteen.
When was it, sixteen?
TMC data were from counts conducted July twelfth, two thousand sixteen.
Yeah, that's not so bad.
Oh, that's changed a big time since that.
Yeah, that was, that was.
And then they have to account for a growth factor for each year, which that they've done.
That was, that was the base and then they had to adjust it. But that's how Mass DOT's been doing their studies too, because you had to make some adjustments on COVID.
I have another question. As far as that road by the Shell Station is concerned, how, how can we be assured that that will be there? And second of all, I know I had talked to District Five, the traffic coming off of 24, okay, is already backed up onto 24. And I was just wondering how much involvement that they have, because I know, I talked to somebody and they are getting this type of information. And I just, I just wonder how that traffic, and I, I picture an eighteen-wheeler coming off of 24 there and immediately trying to make a turn down that road next to the Shell Station. I, I don't understand it.
Well, I mean, they're involved in it because there's a MEPA process.
Yeah, I.
Right. So, so all the agencies weigh in. I'm gonna rap it here too. So, um, I know that they, so your question about whether or not that they're gonna coordinate with Mass DOT, yes, they have to.
Will they have any say over what happens here, is I guess my question? Because they are directly involved with Route 24 right next to that project, and they're going to be involved.
They have, because, that's why MEPA, there was filing with MEPA.
That was the.
Is because there's an indirect access requirement and because of the number of park. We tripped thresholds which require the MEPA, which means that the agencies do have some say. So the agencies, they definitely will have something to say about what's going on.
Yes, sir.
Don Mulcher, three ninety-three South Elm Street. That driveway we're talking about on, uh, Lincoln Street, where is that in relation to Russo's? Is that right across from Russo's?
Yes.
The southern one is. All right, so we're talking about, they don't know what they're gonna do with the retail shop up in the corner. He's concerned about that driveway. Didn't we, the town buy Russo's hopefully someday to put up some type of, uh, recreation center there or ballpark or? So we're gonna have an entrance right across the street from a ballpark, but we're not gonna, we're not gonna worry about, you know, future up at the corner of the hill? In other words, they wanna move the driveway because what they might do someday up in the corner. Well, we're gonna have an exit right where we might put a ball field someday. Tractor trailers coming in and out of there?
That was not the driveway we were talking about, discussing about moving.
The one across.
It was the one further to the north. It was, it was talking about this one, opposite, um, the silver and black, opposite there. That was the one that was the discussion. This one here was not, um, that was not the subject of whether or not they should be moved. That's the one opposite the Russo properties.
I mean, that's gonna be a tight turn and tool coming out of there, isn't it?
No, it's not really, I mean, the radius there is, is, is sufficient for truck, I mean, you're looking at it at one inch equals eighty scale, so it kinda has a different feel to it when you look at it. But they all, they have, um, enough room to be able to drive on these. These are thirty-foot aisles and then they have the radius on them. Those are not 24s, by the way, those are thirty-foot aisles. Yeah, those are good-sized aisles. If you look at the one on Elm Street that we did, the one on Elm Street, same, same criteria, we had thirty-foot aisles. And, uh, so, I mean, those, they're not, there's not a problem in terms of.
The problem with the one, this one over the one in, on Elm Street, is that's sitting in the middle of their industrial. We're dealing with it dumping onto a residential street.
No, I understand that.
That at best right now needs reconstruction, which they're gonna take care of. I mean, and maybe when the reconstruction's done and the sidewalks laid in and the drainage is laid out down to that entrance, it'd be better by some, you know? I just think it would be less aggravation if that driveway was moved. I have no sympathy for that. I'm just, I mean, I'm here for the town. I'm not, I mean, I don't know, but he's the guy that took Jimmy G.
Who's Jimmy G? Yeah, is it football?
Football.
Yeah. Thank you, for those who don't read, the bylaw owns the San Francisco Forty-Nine.
I did my research.
Yes, sir.
I believe the water commissioners asked the water main to come in from South Elm. And you're saying that you're gonna bring it in from West Center Street?
That's not sure. The water commission is, um, are, are fine with the way that we're bringing in the water line. What they asked is the potential for going further than the project and extending twelve-inch line from that point down to South Elm, which is not related to the project. It's related to, uh, improvements for the town. Okay, um, and we talked about, um, maybe there's a way to be able to do that. Maybe there's a way to use funds that would otherwise be for, um, like tying fees. Waive some of those if he actually does additional water line work going down towards South Elm. But it's not needed for this project. It's probably good for the town to have that line go all the way down to South Elm Street. But remember, that's a section of, of road that was just recently upgraded too. So there was actually an O-Touch kinda period at that time on that altar.
Yeah, five years.
Five years on that road.
And the better water tie-in, I believe, is West Center Street, right?
That's, that's what they've indicated.
I, I think it's near West Street.
That's the one that we're tying in?
Yeah, it's, the, the good main is, yeah, west and West Center Street.
Right.
We have to come up and then down.
Right.
Okay, any, any further things? Okay, we got, um, quite a few concerns here. I know, I know what you're saying, Jerry, I wonder if, if we shouldn't continue it for, for, to the next meeting and, uh, give him a chance to, for you to show some, show him some schemes and stuff, because probably was hard to grasp it over the telephone. And, uh, let's see if he, you know, can, can come up with something further than that, or, or we can.
If I can vote for what the entrance story is.
How do I address the, um, so let's say we do that, why don't we continue?
When's that next meeting, because we, we're.
We're not, we're not on the seventh, um, there'll be two weeks from now.
Fourteenth, something, twenty-first?
Twenty-first.
I think continuing it makes more sense.
I think so too.
So, so let's talk about what the issues are that need to be resolved. Will it be basically that, that drain, that, that driveway?
Entrance, entrance one, and that could be strictly the, that would eliminate going around the building. It could be all, all, the second driveway, the most southern driveway, could be strictly for small vehicles. And the trucks would come, they'd either come in the Shell Station and back into load dock, unload, then they come out, they're gonna come out anyways onto Lincoln Street. They're gonna come right out and just go across and tie into, uh, the new Lincoln Street. Because they're gonna use the traffic lights to get on 106 regardless. There's no truck traffic's gonna go south, tractor trailer. Maybe anything under two and a half ton, yes. Because I'm gonna hold him to his word, because he discussed, I discussed that with him at the meeting. I says, that's gonna be your biggest opposition, is all construction equipment? And he agreed, he says, he doesn't want, I guess he got a lot of aggravation on the Elm Street one, of the truck traffic coming through West Bridgewater.
You're talking about construction, I believe.
It's construction related. He agreed that all construction and future commercial stuff would go to 106.
In my conversation with him just now, he says that he, I told him about what you had said about it, what he had said to you. He said anything that he had said was related to construction, he never would say it related to future use, because he doesn't know who his tenant is, what their needs are, and whether or not it's small trucks, large trucks, he doesn't know.
Yeah, but the, the thing is, is the tractor trailers are the problem. The small delivery vans aren't the problem. And, and I do believe statute states that you can't restrict, you, we've got streets that are only good for two and a half ton. But if you've got an oil truck that's gonna deliver somebody's oil to them, he's over two and a half ton. Because he's gonna, he can go down the street and deliver. So anything that's delivery to that state, UPS trucks, they're all, all over two and a half ton. They're making a delivery on the street, but they're not gonna use, they can't, what's gonna happen? Anything going right is, intent is for it to not, only to be delivery, not for, to get the Elm Street.
Okay. All right, so we agree that we'll continue to the twenty-first. All I ask is the specific issues and, I almost wanna say, what, what has to be resolved. I wanna be exactly clear, because I don't wanna get back here on the twenty-first. I want to be exactly clear because I don't want to get back here on the 21st and say, well, it's something else or, or it's different than what I thought it was.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay, so if there's a way for you guys to communicate those, to say these are specifically what you want to have resolved, even if it's a couple of bullets?
I, I think as, as far as the issues, we're going to forward to the building commissioner the issues of the selectmen. Marilyn, if, if, if your committee has something to submit, which I know, I know you're in communication with.
Yeah, right, we've, it had been done, so it's, yeah.
So, but, so we won't even get into, into that because that's usually something that comes with the architectural when we get the final plan and they see where the, where the entrance is going to be. So that's where the, where the, the building entrance, that's where the handicaps. So we'll just leave that. You, you.
Just let us know when this, you know, do we get those plans or are they the same ones we, we have?
It'd be these.
Those that you have.
Well, it'll be, it'll be the architectural plans, which I do not believe that the architectural plans have been submitted to the building department.
Maybe we can get a copy just so that we can get it.
Yeah. But no, I don't, I don't know, I don't think they have. I think this is just, this is the site plan. So, so the, the thing is refining or revising the location of the entrance. Is any, any other, I don't think, I think that's really the only thing that has, has come up on it.
I mean, anything else they're doing, they're reading all the rules or regulations.
Yeah.
I mean.
Yeah. All right. I think that's, that's a right approach.
And as soon as Joanna gets these all typed up, and she's a very efficient type of field have of, I think I've spelled mistakes once in a while, but she does a pretty good job. I'll, I'll forward the.
But when will the line be done?
I will, I will forward the minutes to you so you'll have everything. All right. And by all means, if you can make an argument, you know, given you a chance to, to take a, take a look at.
I'm at a disadvantage trying to discuss it with him at this point. He's eager to get the thing approved so he can move forward, but this is an issue, like you say. I don't have an approach.
It's not, it's not something that we haven't let him know about. And he would, I think he was led into by many, many people at that town meeting. A lot of people spoke of the same issue.
Yeah.
And he stood at the pitches that you had at the end of the gymnasium. He was there talking to people, so it's not something we're throwing at him tonight.
Right. Maybe he has to go back and see what he actually, if he has his own, or recalls what he actually committed to. It's not there to ask him now, is there nothing in front of him to actually refer to?
Which, which is, is had. It's worth a thousand words.
Yeah. So we will do that. And so, so you're saying July 21st?
Yes. So at the request of the proponent, we're going to continue this to July 21st. And I might just have a vote on, I'll entertain a motion to.
What time, what time?
To 7:30.
Seven?
7:30, is it too late?
9:15 is too late.
Push it up, push it up.
It's six, six, six o'clock or it's 6:30.
There's a recommendation to a 6:30.
7:30. So we have, we have a, the plan, the motion is to accept the proponent's request to convey, to continue this to July the 21st at 7:30. We have a motion, do we have an acceptance?
Second.
Those in favor?
Would you like just passing this out?
I'll give very well.
That's actually one eight. Ah, I was sitting in a goddamn house, nice and cool. I have to make it 7:30, huh? You didn't tell me that, you bastard. Every time I see you, you look younger. I look older, you look younger, what's going on?
I don't understand why they can't, one entrance can, one entrance. That don't make sense.
She's incredible.
It don't make sense.
Still driving, still going in the hairdressers every week.
Good.
So she's remarkable. So I'm hoping that I got some genes from that.
Are we done? Yeah, well, my father was 7'4". Apparently, so how much more crap we got to go through? I came from a shallow end of that particular gene pool.
My dad lived to be 84 and my dad was a smoker and I was a drinker.
Well, that's what saved him.
There you go.
Alcohol is a preservative.
Smoke in there couldn't be able to stop you.
Funny thing, you don't.
Remind me so I can get those to you. All right?
All right.
You're welcome.
Meet the adjourn, let's go.
Not yet.
I know.